I call meeting in order. Apologies to being late, it was my daughter's very first open house and she was first grader. So she was very upset when I said I couldn't make it. So tried to squeeze it in.
Um.
Still paper.
Ah, still paper, please.
Um, no, no, I made it. Um, so we're gonna stand for the five. Pleasure to be here.
To you. To the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under invisible, representative, and justice.
So uh, can you approve of a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Yes. Uh, and public comment? You have any public comments? Okay, no public comment. And uh, personnel services. Um. Uh, approval of resolution twenty twenty-two fifteen to reduce over the particular kinds of certificate certificated services for the twenty 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 twenty-three school year. And if we find a layoff notice to effective four. Can I get a motion, a motion to approve four A?
I make a motion to approve four A.
Can I get a second? Sorry, this is all in, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
I think it's awesome.
Oh, okay, can you get a little?
Trusty Brown?
Yes.
Trusty, Cina?
Yes.
Billy?
Yes.
Trusty, Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, business and operations, I'm gonna hand this over to Mike.
So the reason we're having this session tonight, I wanted to give you some background information. For the past several months, we've received a lot of questions about the budget. And the board felt it was really important to provide a reasonable review of the budget and take time to answer questions that we heard throughout the year. Um, we may not have time to answer every question that comes up tonight. But what we're going to do is we're going to compile all those little questions and create a frequently asked questions document that we will send out to the community as well as post on our website. So we're gonna start with a brief presentation from our CBO, John Bartolome, and then we're gonna have opportunity to ask questions, the board will be able to ask questions. And what we're gonna also be doing, um, some of those will be questions that are asked, we were asked throughout the year. And then we're gonna have some index cards, I'm gonna have the directors, Jen Hansen, Director of Human Resources, she has index cards, so the audience can write questions. So something, you know, your question is an answer as we go through the presentation as we give the board, uh, discuss the budget, you can write them down and we will try and answer them throughout the evening. And um, and then it, what we'll do at the end is provide a FAQ. So then we'll post that and send that out, as I said before. The one, the goal is to conclude the meeting by seven P M. The other thing I wanted to add is I, I received a few questions about live streaming. Challenge we have is the only live streaming, the setup question is at the tag building. So it's really difficult to uh, have a less formal setting and a tag building and live stream. So what we're doing today, I, I wanted to give a shout out to Mike Herbie, who's our big manager, creator of manager. I called him at twelve and I said, what can you do? This is really valuable information. So we're not live streaming, but we're recording. Those of you that remember when we were just in London, we had a famous infamous poly camera that takes a teacher and has a microphone, so it'll pick up our voices. So that's set up and we will report the meeting. And then we will post it probably tomorrow sometime. Hopefully sooner, before noon, with the slideshow and so that people can view the meeting. So that's the challenge with, uh, we want the for, the informal setting, we want a different type of environment, but we can't live stream. And typically also wanna remind folks, study sessions are opportunities for the board to learn together. So we do workshops about leadership, about governance, and typically people aren't always interested in those topics, so we don't get a huge audience. So yeah, we do, did like a middle school and library. So just wanted to give you that context. And then I'm gonna turn over to John Bartolome, our CBO, who's gonna provide uh, the presentation.
Do you wanna say the questions after we do that?
Oh, yes, thank you. I'm so sorry, I wrote that down and I still didn't. Uh, the, the other kind of rule about study sessions is if you have a question, it has to be about the agenda, the topics on the agenda, so all of your questions have to be about the budget. Okay, thank you. And um, yeah, if you want, yeah, if you want a uh, uh, index card, Jen Hansen is the first, oh, they're up there, so you bring them to Jen and she will sort them. Thank you. Thanks for being my.
Okay, we can go to the next slide. Purpose of the budget review, what Mike already said, I appreciate that. Um, so what I wanna start off with, and I apologize to those of you who uh, you know, see these presentations, you can see the similar slides, but you know, the state budget process is really to track our budget because we're a local control funding formula district. Uh, the information that we get from the state and federal government is what drive our budget. So this is a calendar kind of around timeline of state budget process. We just start in January, which we just passed, the governor proposes his budget for the next year, which starts in July. Uh, February, the main thing that happens is the legislative analyst review with Cummins, uh, his budget. And April, statutory COLA is recalculated. And that's uh, you know, one of, you know, one of the main factors in our revenue calculation. And then in May, uh, next week, I believe I'll be going to a May revise workshop where I'll learn uh, the most recent governor's budget proposals. If they've changed, which they likely have since January. And never has happened in my career, but June fifteenth or later, and it's usually later, the government, the budget, the state budget is adopted, it's generally in July, but it's going to be June fifteenth right now. So final, the, the state budget is adopted, uh, you get a final quote for that budget year. Uh, additional programs or funding changes, which we've seen over the last four years, lots of categorical programs are announced and are prioritized. And then in November, again, we basically start again. Legislative Analyst Report is gonna come out with projections for the, the next year based on tax elections and predictions, and then we're back in January, so. But uh, I'm sorry for some of these slides that are a little small, a bit short to the audience, so you're all done. Um, printed, printed by the, printed presentation, but uh, oh. So, you know, one of my mentors told me that our budget, the district budget, and most of your projections are only as good as the assumptions that are used to create them. And uh, you know, as you can see, when we overlay the district's budget process over the state's, you know, the, the information that we get changes all the time. And that's why from report to report, which I think should stand alone as what our budget is at that moment, uh, that is why I have, you know, the state, we're relying on the state and federal government as Congress to project for current or future years, so. As an example, I'll just give an example, you know, back in twenty twenty, uh, before the, you know, when the pandemic started or COVID started, the districts in California adopted budgets that assumed eight, eight percent reductions due L C F F. Uh, only to have that restored when the state adopted their budget. Uh, CRP U S D was looking at deficits by year of uh, two million, five million, seven million in that N Y P for those years. But by second interim, we were projecting a million dollar surplus. So that's, that's as big a swing you're gonna get, right? I mean. In June, when the, or July, when the budget was adopted, we were, we were, we were we were projecting huge losses, huge deficits. And that was the first time in my career, which I've been doing this fourteen years now, it was the first time I've ever needed to do a quarter fact day, uh, budget revision. I wasn't in this district, but nonetheless, most, most districts that are L C F F funded had to do that. And you know, it went from negative eight percent to zero, which is, it's really a huge amount of money, you know? Um, and like I said, second interim, negative, we're operating projecting uh, some surpluses, so. Uh, yeah. So yeah, uh. I, I can't emphasize enough that all of this information is what builds our budget. We're a state funded district or a L C F F funded district, and the difference, you know, you might have heard of, you know, about half the districts in Sonoma are basic A. You know, um, and the difference is state funded districts, we have the calculator, the, the formula, uh, calculates entitlement to the district, how we get funded for that is uh, if you can see the bucket on the left there. The local property taxes fill that bucket to a, to a point. Um, we're guaranteed the top of that bucket. And then state provides state aid to, to fill, to fill that gap. And that's, that's how we're funded. And basic A districts, um, the, the percentage of local property taxes exceeds the amount that is, that the local control funding formula calculates for that district. So they get to, they get all of that plus the excess or whatever flows over the budget. And um, you know, neighboring basic A districts, like I said, over almost half of the districts in Sonoma are basic A, but the local ones, those fire in Sonoma Valley, Fieldsburg, High School Union, Old Adobe, um, and an extreme example of the inequity in funding that different school districts face is a district that Trustee Brown brought up in a recent board meeting, Saint Molina. Saint Molina is a basic A school district, kind of close by, right? Uh, their per pupil funding last year was thirty-three thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars.
How much is?
CRP U S D's per pupil funding in that same year was thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-two bucks.
Three times.
So you can imagine they could do, what that can like?
Holy math.
That's a lot of church.
That's what, yeah.
Twenty thousand per kid?
Yeah.
Thirty-three.
That's the extreme, that's, that's always the district that I.
Thirty, twenty, twenty thousand per kid.
Yeah.
Hey, John, which is basic A district, so like Saint Molina has thirty-three per student, we get thirteen. Does all of that extra, that extra bucket, is that unrestricted money that they can spend however they want?
Absolutely. That everyone has that.
You know, some of it.
The overflow of property taxes, the district's basic A districts got this unrestricted, they can use that money.
I want you to remember, but I'm, but my quote is that the way that the state funds the difference between the L C F F and basic A is critical.
Yeah.
Because no way does one community deserve to get thirty-three thousand dollars of education. The same requirements that our district gets thirteen times. It's just, it just, and, and that's just what it can't, you go brand, you go bottom, all the wealthier districts, and they got a lot of empowerment, so it's just incredible that this, this goes on like this. So if I was ever like, the first thing I could do is make an equal for everybody and stop the basic A's, it's just, no stopping.
So they get, that would be twelve million dollars if we got an additional funding for people.
Yeah.
It's hilarious.
It'd be at least double.
And your, your L C F F is based on your enrollment that you get paid out through your A D A?
Essentially, yeah, I have a little bit of similar.
Okay, sorry, I wanted to just.
So um, Trustee Lee was getting to where I'm.
She's so excited.
She thought it, so.
Like you've seen this like seven times, so.
Yeah, it's true.
Like this is how keep these lights on, like this is going one of the most important things we do.
A hundred and twenty.
Well, see, I thought, we thought we'd.
A hundred and twenty million dollars more we could get if we had saved the same. A hundred and twenty million dollars, twice of those.
I missed a year.
Okay.
Is, I mean, I want the audience to understand it.
Yeah, it's huge.
That we don't have the same funding, but others, because of the inequity of the state's.
So the funding, uh, this slide really represents the funding factors um, for the current year and the out years that, that drive revenues and, you know, kind of some of the expenditure categories that we deal with, so um, what I highlighted are the COLAs. Uh, the COLA for twenty-two, twenty-three was recently increased from six point, from five point three-three to six point five-six. That's about six hundred and eighty-nine thousand more dollars uh, that we're gonna receive because of that next year. Um, and if you go down to the bottom of this, this slide, we are funded on um, average daily attendance. So average daily attendance is a percentage of our enrollment. If, if a hundred percent of our kids. Be funded on the enrollment amount because that is, but since they don't. Uh, so we get, we get a, we get a percentage, ninety-five percent, ninety-six percent is this historical average for this district, uh, as far as A D A goes. Uh, this year, we had a little more funding than we did um, from the local control funding one of them because our enrollment was up, was up over. And had those, you know, had ninety percent, ninety-one percent of those did show up uh, every day. We would have seen a little bit more funding if we did, because this year, we were L harmless, um, A D A wise or funded A D A wise from two thousand nineteen to twenty. Unfortunately, we did not hit that number for many reasons, but with work dysphoria, general sickness, whatever. We didn't hit the number unfortunately, but uh, in the out years, our enrollment maintains, which is important, um, and we conservatively reach, you know, ninety-three percent is the, uh, is the assumption currently, ninety-three and a half percent. Probably budgeted for in June of last year, so. Those are the major funding factors from the revenue side. Um, the other small piece of that is the underpaid pupil count, which is the percentage of green reduced, um, students, green reduced lunch, uh, health, English learner, across you. Um, and that is determined by the, I think it's about something else, but the income verification form that we need families to fill out to uh, to increase that percentage, the rolling average. But uh, if we can hit fifty percent, we can. Supplemental grants, and fifty-five is a big percent, is a big jump, but that's when the concentration in budget comes in, and that's where the governor put a, a lot of money into. But we're nowhere close to getting that.
Do you want to put on that?
Yeah.
And that's not like an immediate thing, that's not like for every year you get it, you have to be, have that much, that percentage of people for a certain amount of years.
It's a three year.
To get it, yeah. And then if you don't make it one year, then you lose it, then you have to start over again.
Yeah, we, we're, we're Australian, we are getting some, you know, we're only getting forty, whatever our percentage is, forty-six percent of the, of the supplemental grant, so we are getting, you know, forty-five million dollars through the L C F F for supplemental, for our supplemental students, but if we had fifty percent, then you get it. Fifty percent over that, that's another.
Right, but does it work where if you have, like say up to that fifty-five percent, those people below don't get a hundred percent, it's the people moving forward get a hundred percent? So it's not like once you hit fifty-five percent, all the other people?
Yeah, it's a, from then moving forward, you're getting a hundred percent.
It's still no matter what, everyone below is still giving.
Something.
So it's, it's where you start giving money, but it definitely will change.
That's for concentration, you'll see that, you'll see it in the next slide, so. This is, I know this is small, I really apologize, I mean, you want the information, I'm trying to give them these slides, but uh, this is possibly, I mean, people heard, but I just. Uh, but what, what's here is, uh, you know, the COLA for this year was five point oh-seven percent. Grant amounts there, um, those are increased five point oh-seven percent. A D A level, our A D A is the first column there, which is by grade span, it's multiplied by the base grant. Get a little bit more for a grade span adjustment, and there's that supplemental, we're getting forty-six, forty-seven percent of the, of the available grants. All of this adds up, you know, when you take all, all four grade spans times those base amounts and, and supplemental amounts, uh, equals fifty-five million dollars. And that is the formula that is our ongoing money. Majority of the funding that we receive in this district by far. Um, and uh, that is why, you know, this is an example, and you can see, it was inputting that A D A, A D A matters, what the, what the state puts into the formula matters, and the, we get a good amount matters a little bit. So next, your opponent. You got you.
As you go through this, you can say, okay, if I have a T K to third grader, um, we spend seventeen million dollars.
We, we get something, that's the revenue needs.
Right.
We're receiving something.
That's the total revenue we're receiving. Then you see for the sixth grade, we receive eleven, so that dropped down. So is there an average, well, I guess you could divide the number of students in each of those categories to find out how much.
Yeah.
You, you have to get to high school, nine through twelve, which is a more expensive process to educate these kids, because they're not in one classroom, there's athletics, there's music, there's, you know, here, there. Like, as you can see, they're plenty, you know, cost different miles, but equally, we don't, I know it's almost possible with budget sample, you say, okay, I'm gonna spend seventeen million on, on K through three, eleven million on four through six, eight million on seven, I mean, how, we, we, we don't do it.
No, we don't, we have to consider the fact that we have to treat each child almost individually, right? Because if we have a T K student that is struggling for some reason, or needs extra intervention, that job will probably, you know, cost more, right? So we're, we're meeting the needs of each child, so whatever that child needs, it will be more money. So we get a certain amount of revenue, but it may exceed the cost of the services.
So your fact is, how did the state, with these, with these dollar amounts? You know, I understand they probably, is, is there anything that we can help share with the audience to say, well, the state feels that this level, there's more funding, is that how they kind of, kind of came up with that educational one?
Yeah, and I think, you know, what, what we've typically heard, you know, what I've heard throughout my career is, we wanna, we wanna provide support at the early grades, right? We have to let her see by third grade, we want, we want the children not to have any opportunity gaps.
We don't want to fall apart.
Right, and that, that's why, you know, there tends to be an investment at those primary grades.
Right.
And then, and then, and then I'm gonna say, high school's just more expensive, right? So you know, we're investing a lot of money, you know, for those little ones, to make sure we're, you know, they're acquiring English, uh, they're learning mathematics, they're reading on grade levels, they're prepared for the upper grade. So then, I think that's the rationale, I'm sure people chime in, educators chime in, when we're, when we're given the opportunity.
Well, when we see a big drop off in, in, I hate to use test score data, but you see a drop off in the middle school years, and that's where the least amount of funding comes from. Four through six goes down six thousand, but then look at seven and eight, when you're trying to prepare these kids for high school. It's like, what, a third, almost?
A billion.
I'm sorry. That's what I meant, sorry. I knew that, sorry.
Okay.
Um, no, but I just look at the amount of money that we're spending on the seventh and eighth, not prepared.
So.
Where's the, where's the, where's the poppy?
I mean, sorry, the income when you spread it out over the amount of chairs.
I want to remind, I want to remind everyone that this is unrestricted, right? And then we have restricted. So if I have a seventh grader that is not moving in a grade level and is falling behind in math, and I'm a title one school, uh, the administrators have a chunk of change that they can use to do that. So all of our administrators, some principals here in the room, that have developed their single school plan that's approved by the school side council, so parents get involved, and that, that funding is, is, we look at that. And it's, and, you know, not all schools are title one and get those extra money, so there's other ways to, you know, to advocate through school. Anyway, but um, but that, you know, for example, I'm gonna give a specific example, John Lee has an intervention room, they have intervention materials, and they have a title one, uh, teacher who provides intervention, who's trained all the hair professionals on that campus to provide intervention. So that's one very specific that I know the details on. Each school has unique programs, and then they, and they do that. Every school in here has a program that meets some needs for their kids.
How many title needs do we now have, I mean, we just added two.
We're, we, we started, we had two, then we went to six because we have, we, we discovered, for better or for worse, discovered that we have, you know, more schools than the district had originally identified. And we have another school that's qualified, which is Montevista. So Richard Cray and Montevista are targeted systems, which means they're going to pick a group of students that require more support at their schools, and then, you know, so let's say it's their English learners. Let's say it's their second grade class that needs more support, they can target the support to that person. School wide, which is where other schools, that means you can use the funds for all of, for all of those children. So intervention, professional development, parent education, um, there's a lot of, you know, supports you can find in that way. And part of the, I'm, we're walking a little bit, but part of those type of one needs say that we must provide parent education, parent engagement, one percent of our class must be allocated. And, and all of those school plans are available at each school, and you can see, each school is able to design programs based, based on their needs, and every school has a, has a set, a long set system.
Thank you.
Sure.
I also think that this, uh, this slide represents where we're seeing better beneficial, you know, they're more in the earlier grades and less in the high schools, where we saw a big jump in the enrollment A D A this year, so. So this is the projected revenue for twenty-two, twenty-three, based on the information that we have currently, COLA of six point five-six percent today, uh, that's gonna apply to the base in the grade span adjustments. Or, or increased A D A projections, which have been since. Um, usually, you know, we're looking at sixty million. And this, uh, this is a six hundred eighty-three thousand dollar increase since our report passed through second year. Uh, because then that's based on the. Uh, because then that's based on the COLA projection, so.
So John, is six point five six from next year has been confirmed, or that still is updated?
Yeah, it's an assumption until the governor makes a final in July, but uh, that is what, that's the news that we are, we've got the transparency. You know, that's what the deal is.
And that that's what we'll hear at the main relax. Maybe.
That's what we, that's what.
That's what, that's what we're predicted to hear at the main relax. Very exciting, very exciting.
There's, there's all kinds of rumors out there about what the main, main visual break, and, you know, I'll just share one of the good ones, is that they're gonna put even more money into the base grant, which would mean a enhanced for uh, COLA, you know, the COLA is determined by many factors, and this is what it is currently. And there have been years that the the governor, this state has put enhanced the, or augmented the COLA to put more money into the, into the formula, so.
Enhance, I think, the really, we've been advocating for more base funding. Base funding doesn't have the strings attached, we have more freedom on how we use it. And as a county, we've been saying, they're giving us one-time money, the fiscal cliff is coming, that money goes away, we're going to be in trouble. If the money goes away, and then all those positions will go away, and and what we're doing is trying to build capacity and make as much progress forward. So as a county, the superintendents got together and wrote a letter to the governor, and used them, and everyone's writing, we, thank you for the one-time money, we need more base funding. And that's, and what I'm excited is, I'm not always so positive about the re- our representatives hearing us, but they have, that's the common thread that we're hearing is that there's more, um, they're increasing the base file, I don't know for how long, I've been in education long enough that that changes, you know, for a few years, things change. But we're really hopeful that that base funding will increase.
And COLA is unrestricted? Or is it made?
The COLA is applied to the base, yeah, but it is applied to the uh, categorical funding, some of the categorical funding.
And you get your COLA numbers from the Department of Finance, but if I Google anticipated COLA, I could find lots of.
Yeah, you might see different.
I just wanna know what source we are.
Well, if you're really excited about watching how sausage gets made, you you can watch some of the horse trading that's going on down at the Senate, on the World Senate at the State. Because one of their big things, all the letter writing and all pushing from everybody is, well, we're grateful for the one-time money, stop it. Because we need to increase the LCFA base funding, and we need that to continue. If you're gonna increase it, keep it, you know, they found forty-five billion dollars in North Florida, so we'd like some of it to come to school.
And then isn't there a bill right now that is trying to switch it from ADA to involvement-based funding?
Just one of the ones, yeah.
Yeah, and is there anything that we can do, as a district, or as individual people, to be like, yes, we do that? Like, can we write a letter to the board to say, we support this, or?
Well, it's time I brought that, John had a, you had a, uh, opposite, I can't remember what it was you said, it could be problematic.
Uh, no, yes and no, I mean, I think from the state's perspective, the more money they put into Proposition ADA, which is what funds education, uh, in state of California, I think, you know, if they were to put more money into the, into the proposition, into education funding. They're ruthless, like, maintenance of effort, like, you know, they would have to provide that much or more in the out years, you know, going forward. I think that's potentially why there's, there's reluctance to put, you know, all twenty-six billion dollars of whatever, you know, excess funds there are into the formula, because they would have to do that, you know, they would have to match that or do something better next year or the year after last year.
And when you, when you're talking about made into that, but are you talking special ed?
No, I mean, that's, that's the concept of, uh, that's the constitution of the state, Proposition ADA or education funding, state law, I think.
But that's what they used to say, if you spent this amount of money in special ed, you have to spend the next year you can.
Yes.
So it's really difficult to find ways to enhance that program and decrease costs, and they're saying, no, you're just spending.
Right, perfect, it's fine case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I just threw this in here for Josie Brown's sake, the. These are the uh, these are compared to districts uh, within, you know, thirty, fifty miles, I think, uh, that are similar to us in that they're LCFA funded districts. You know, if we had some basic A districts, we would be, you know, we'd be, we'd look even worse. But even on this chart, we're la- the second to last at uh, revenues per, uh, average daily attendance, thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-two. We're about twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars per ADA to the average, you know, to get to the average, so.
I have a question, Ross Valley, is that in Red County?
Yeah, I know it's Ross, that's like.
Both, both, both are in, both are in Red.
Yeah. Yeah, Ross and Ross can fail. They have a, well.
Yeah.
I have the same question.
Something's not right, well.
Cause they, they get money.
Unless all the kids down in Ross go to private school.
They're, they're teetering, that particular district is teetering between LCFA, LCFA funding.
Average possible in Ross is like three to five million dollars, doesn't make any sense, but anyway.
But remember, a lot of those people were being practically cut because of the house they bought in nineteen sixty, not twenty twenty.
That's my opinion, my opinion.
Well, Ross and Penfield, that whole area, San Antonio used to be, I grew up in San Antonio, but, and we certainly didn't have money. Ryan's not the ownership, but it was attorneys and dentists and doctors and.
So, I'm gonna ask a question. So if I, you know, we don't have date-wise salaries, you know, like, like, it's, how do I afford to pay an average wage against all my employees, which is all the existing, so if I'm in case number one, I'm in the most getting twenty-six thousand dollars for students, I can afford to pay my teachers, my janitors, my administrators more money, because I have that. And then we've heard, we've got beat up for you, but should board base, we're not paying average throughout the state, and that, well, here's why. Because we don't get the funding, so you're, you're, you're stuck there, so I just, I wanna make that point, that, that if I had the funding, I would issue that, having been in the finance career, it's all about revenue, and I'm about protection, so. Uh, and and this slide would have been great to show, you know, to, to talk about that.
There's definitely no equity, that's for sure.
Yeah, there's.
And this is just four districts in the local county. Same that I did.
This is just, oh, you put, you put same thing.
I'm sorry, I meant to mention we're in California, but if you look at all of California, where we got a thousand districts. Probably all over the map, if you look at places with their tax revenue, like Hollywood and San Diego, and Marley, all of those areas. It's, it's probably, it's probably more like San Antonio.
As a, as a, we've got, there, how many districts in this county?
Forty. Forty.
Forty? Do we need forty districts? No, if I, I think they don't need them.
No, we don't.
We don't need forty boards, we don't need, I'm not trying to tax pretenses or, or, right, but that can be consolidated way down, it can be, you know. I can't, I lost my job, consolidation is a good solution. You can save a lot of money by not having these files all over the place and duplicating a lot of costs. And, not political, it's, you can go to your next county superintendent's.
So I just wanted to illustrate, you know, how how much, uh, that's a, for, hit our district, you know, we've seen increases in in revenues and, uh, over the last since I was. At times, we're seeing increased costs, and these are costs that we have no control, zero. Uh, and this is uh, contributions that the district needs to make, how we've the teachers' retirement system, this is pension. For all the other employees, the, uh, public employees' retirement system in California, so. As you can see here, the the blue line represents the uh, the increase in base, like uh, myself, or we're contributing, uh, we were contributing eleven point eight five percent in thirteen, fourteen, and all of these are probably double, uh, the rates that we're paying in that kind of span, and you can see what this actually causes in the next.
Just for clarity, if I spend, if you're asking that, so if I spend one dollar per salary, I gotta pay twenty-seven cents benefits and put it in.
Yeah.
Okay, I explained why I'm a public worker, I can, years, that you pay for a hundred years.
So, thank you for bringing that up, so for first alone, for a, a certificate of class, I believe, for every dollar that we pay, we're paying twenty-seven point one cents.
More.
It costs us one dollar point seven cents, and.
Just for.
Just for first, and if you include all the other payroll, uh, expenditures, it's, it's more like a dollar, um, a dollar thirty-three cents when you include workers' comp, unemployment, insurance, all these things. Uh, and for certificate, it's a dollar twenty-one cents for every dollar that we pay. So the next slide will show in dollars, how much, uh, what we've seen in increased costs for both of these, uh, core contributions to these retirement systems. You know, we were about two point five million, uh, eight, nine, eight or nine years ago, and it's up to six point six million dollars. That's over a four million dollar difference. But we've been, we've seen increased funding over that time as well, yes.
The district relatively the same size of that, I mean, if you, if you back that, that slide, can our district double the size, then you expect to see.
Yeah.
But relatively, we're about the same size.
Maybe even smaller.
Smaller.
Yeah, we have way huge, we have bigger moments.
Maybe it's back before that, we had a, should state that as a student.
Yeah.
And, we dropped off the recession, housing, stuff, but I think. Anyways, but so, we have, so my, my point is, we have grown employee drive at that number.
So the other big expense the district incurs is, uh, what we pay on behalf of, on behalf of our employees for health and welfare costs. Health benefits, vision, that's all. Uh, you can see on the left there what the, the increases have been, that we've been, you know, charged over the years. Um, we assume a three percent increase, we just found out next year is gonna be by horizontal, it's a problem. So again, you know, we've gone from five point four million dollars in, um, health and welfare expense to nine point five, nine point six million this year. Okay, try to go through these quicker, um. So, these are the key budget assumptions that we use, um, pretty much all, all based for, um, our current year budget and and our multi-year projections, so we use the Department of Finance COLA, about that, or our, our step in column, which means, you know, uh, every, most every teacher in this district moves up a step salary schedule, and, uh, on the average, not all every step means raise, but most do. Uh, every teacher's, um, movement on the salary schedule, it's about a one point five percent increase to our budget. Um, like I said, we assume a, a health and welfare increase of three percent annually, but this year, again, it's five, just five thousand. Yesterday, I think. Um, you know, uh, the increase, purchase, first, first costs, as I was showing you earlier, um, again, uh, our enrollment was up this year. Um, and if that carries out, and we, and we see, uh, what we have seen, the, uh, average of the tenants wise, we, we could we could see more revenue, uh, and I think that's, you know, one's responsibility, it's the school. Keeps them healthy and ready to learn, obviously, they, they attend schools, I heard that.
John, that's still due to COVID, fall down, to ninety-three point five?
Um, that's just the assumption I'm using, based on, this year, we were way under that, so, uh, I think it's ninety-three point five percent, it's a conservative, uh, percentage. Our, but like I said, our historical averages are more like ninety-five, ninety-six in this district, so.
And hold harmless in the next year.
Correct.
Next year, I think, July first.
Yes.
Sorry.
Uh, so I, I don't agree with this next point, because the, you know, the governor put in a bunch of money towards account, uh, towards concentration grant funds, and, uh, we're well aware of that, threshold. So we, we're not gonna see any, uh, more funding for concentration, in the future. And we got settled with, uh, two of our, our main groups, and we're, so we settled our last one this week. So, uh, this is just a table of our, of our funding, um, you saw that fifty-five million, this is for this year, fifty-five million dollar, or earlier. Uh, I just wanna make note that the local revenue on the unrestricted side includes the parco tax, revenue is for about one point three million dollars. And the casino, graded casino fund, uh, grant funds that they give us every year, which is about one point two million. So the difference between unrestricted and combined is, uh, we also receive restricted dollars, which, um, which include our title months, Title I, II, III, and IV, uh, all of COVID money that we, you know, that we're gonna receive for learning loss mitigation. Pay money, lottery, there's two, two pots of lottery money that we get, special ed. Our program, we actually do this. So, for this year, I mean, you know, we have about an eighty million dollar budget for buying general. And that's, that's increased because we spent a little bit more of the one-time money than we, the budget did, you know, at any point this year, basically. The one-time payment we've been up to at least, so, so.
So, one more slide, so how much of the seventy million, million, it's one-time funds, I just, I, I don't know if you know that.
It's, it's in one of the next slides.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm asking a question, please.
That's okay, um, let's talk about, so, let's talk about one-time funds for a second, you know, um.
I guess I should move it for a second.
Beginning of twenty-twenty, or beginning of twenty-twenty, you know, the state and federal government has allocated uh, just under seventeen million dollars to this district for, um, you know, COVID learning loss. Uh, ESSER is what we hear a lot about, which stands for elementary school and secondary work. Um, you know, we have until twenty-twenty-four to spend the majority of this fund, so. Uh, some of those, uh, dates are often, like, the in-person instruction grant and the expanded learning activities grant have been extended, uh, for another year, so, but we're gonna spend those.
Is this sixteen, seventeen million in other buckets, not in the seventy million, million bucket?
Because, you know, because
So 79 million is operating funds, which is how it's on.
The difference between 73 and 59. So the difference between 79 and 59
2 million dollars.
Is about, is what we receive unrestricted side. All of the COVID dollars or all of the one-time money is restricted. It's all unrestricted. It's not on budget, like all, not all of the 16 million, 17 million, we've spent some of it.
Right.
But I think to Les' point, that 17 million on this next slide is not included
Not all of it.
The difference of
But some of it is, so probably
Some, 6. something, I'll, I'll get to that.
Really quick to go back, you said some of the income is from our bonds and parcel tax?
Parcel tax, not bond.
Okay. One, it runs out soon, right?
2025.
And how much revenue will we lose when it runs out? And you can get back to that, right?
1.3.
1.3?
So you could try to remember.
When does it run out?
2025.
When does it run out? Oh, 2025.
Hopefully, we can, we can increase it a little bit. It's, it's $89 per parcel currently. As far as parcel tax goes, that's, we appreciate every dollar that we get that's on the lower side of parcel tax.
So that's we pay the group to go out and do.
If you look at your property taxes, you have $89 per parcel. And then the 800 property tax on is anywhere from an average house of $500 to $2,000. I mean, a year, a piece of 100, so when you buy your house. This is an interesting observation. I was talking to you a week ago. Because all you have that, that beautiful facility at the high school because of the casino. And I looked at him and I said, have you looked at your property tax bill lately? No, it's not from the casino. It's from the citizens in this community voting. And then that, that's additional money that's paying those bonds off. So the taxpayers are on the hook for the next 30 years to pay for all those wonderful facilities. You gotta pay your, your, your tax person. So that, you know, so people think that we're somewhat restricted in that setting, a million or, you know, operation cost.
Well, a lot of people don't understand funds can't be used for anything but facilities.
Well, the bond can't even be used. That money's gonna spend. And when many of those buildings appear, now it's like a house payment. All the taxpayers, if you were property, are paying for that, for those facilities. We are responsible for maintaining those and pay for the PGE bill, which our PGE bill's gone from 60,000 to 120,000. Just fantastic. So it's wonderful to have the facilities, but you gotta look out cash flow wise. Like, I bought this new car and charged that dice today. How am I gonna handle it? Well, is it another bond issue for the community? So it's just, it's just the way that it works in education and stuff.
And I want to add that, just for the audience, for everyone here, the casino funds, the district must develop a plan for those funds.
Right.
And they have goals, which is
So I don't think goals is really
for represented students, bilingual
Right.
personnel. So it is unrestricted, but we are submitting a plan for approval to a committee, to an ad hoc committee. So, you know, I, you know, we can't
Well, the casino
buy furniture or something. It's very specific focus. They've numbered those.
But the union has a member in that group and, and then there's a third party member as well. And they talk about how they're going to spend the money. So they don't just say, here's a million dollars, do whatever you want with that. But the thing, I was during the negotiations and whatnot with the union, I was getting emails from people saying, what'd you spend all the bond money on? Give the bond money to the teachers and you specifically can't use our money to give salary increases. We can take a small portion of bond money and use it towards the person who's working with the architects and all that, but we can't just go, well, we only spend our money.
What you say, we can't, the states as we think and you're liable.
So I think
Seals of strictish funds, but tell us what we can, can't do. If you don't, you have your troubles.
Yep. We've got some people who want to help out. We can just reassess the value of their house. That would really help out.
Sure. Lots over there hiding, no.
So the next couple of slides just practically represent the part revenues. You can see a big part of the pie there is LCF funding. We go to the next slide. You know, it's a little fun here, but again, we, we realize for the one-time money, which is in federal state revenue, like it's making excuses. All right, so I think most everyone, oh, these are So for this, for this year, our unrestricted budget is about 48 million, 85% of which is a certificate classified salaries that are going to be certificated and classified management salaries here and then that gets
The other thing I could say is when you start comparing us other districts, those numbers, you, it's not apples to apples because there are things like transportation.
Yeah.
Where we, we source that out and then other districts do that enhance. So the amount of money that are spent on actual employees of the district is, it's represented differently, even though there's still people doing the work.
Actually, one of my last slides breaks up the, what you're talking about is the difference people, you might see at other districts for the other services and operating expenditures. And they may or may not, but they may or may not have a number amount there. And I actually break up the 6.9 million dollars of a slide I didn't know where to put, so it's at the end. Talk about that later. So So this is graphically representing a table earlier. 85% of the unrestricted budget is going to salaries. I'd like to break up that 6.9 million dollars on other services in a minute. And then the total general fund budget, then now it's 70 or 5% of the total general fund budget is people costs and then one of the increases just recently is the yield data doctrine. 1.3% dollars added to that, the majority of that is coming out of restricted funds. All right, next slide. And I just
This is funds.
I know. So one of the conceptions in a plaque fighter report was this idea that we are contributing 11 million dollars from our unrestricted budget to our restricted budget. Which is all general fund, but it's to 10, 10 million of the dollars is going towards our special ed program. Things underfunded, only 40% of our program is funded by the state federal government. The 10.1 million dollars is to make that hole and actually every slide on that too. And then the routine restricted maintenance is required 3% of our general fund budget. Needs, is expectatorily required to be contributed to our routine restricted maintenance. So that's 11.5 million dollars that we are, it's only revenue box. It's revenue on the unrestricted side that goes to the restricted side for these programs. So very important, that's it. And we don't have to do the million dollars wise. So again, this is, it's up to date as it's going to be as, so this is really as of yesterday. And this, this format is, is how I present the central basis of the board on a monthly basis. So, but what I've done today is, is prepare what we adopted a budget for a general fund. This is for buying general fund versus what it is today. And you can see on the expense side, you know, most of our certificateed and classified categories have increased. And that is because today is in the one-time dollars that we were paid, that we took in this year. And, you know, some of of the increase in revenues from the one-time or restricted dollars, you can see that again in a second. See the LCFS, which is the majority from unrestricted dollars only increased to 29%. Let's, let's, let's go through the next couple of things. The next slide is, I'm going to answer the, could be down questions. So you can see here that 6.1 million dollars of our restricted dollars revenue is the one-time funds this year. So we've spent, this year we spent, we're going to spend at least 6 million dollars of this.
Well, my point is you don't have money to fund it to.
No, but we still have some.
We still have one, or one, I mean
Those ways.
My grandma gives me $100 on, I spend, I spend that $100. Whether I save it for books or seats, but one-time funds are good, but not for not when you, if you spend one-time funds on ongoing expenses, that right? If, because as soon as you establish something, you establish a program, you establish a service, that one, you're going to stop that service at some point.
I mean, that was a good thing when we were negotiating, is the teacher didn't want one-time money because of that.
Right.
So, I think everyone understands, you know, very well that no one wants that on their check and no school district wants that in their budget.
Right. It's, it's good to take a granted if you can buy computers, or you can buy something, AIDS education. But one-time money for salaries and people that are teaching in schools or maintaining schools, I mean, you can longer have that as a service.
And so much of that money early on, so much of the one-time money early out is back now.
Oh, true. One, the air system's out and
One-to-one, one-to-one advisors.
Oh, they were discussing.
There is one advisor. PGE, protos, safety, veterans.
Where are the college staff? Are they still in the classrooms or? Some might be in classrooms.
Summer time.
Yeah.
All right, let's see. So I just want to reiterate like it's how, this is, this is the multi-year projection that was adopted in June of last year. So you see that, you know, we had, we were, we are projecting the deficit spending at that time. You know, these look like small numbers compared to what we're going to see, but 400,000, 700,000, 66. And, and you know, back then, the total for '22, '23 is 2.48%. And they, they did not at the time reject the enrollment that we have today. So that percent you know, that changed, this year's budget changed because I had actually looked at every budget line of the this year's budget and that's a little bit surplus.
And this was December 2021, right?
Yeah. And at this time, the total, total was increased to 5.33%. And we changed our assumptions for enrollment in media, which increased our revenue. And this is this is the unrestricted budget. This year, we the work started savings, some biggest positions and moving some some of our dollars. This year but we realized with about 4.5% change this year in, in increase rate. So that, we'll see, starting July 1st, there will be 9% raise on their check. And then in December, January, it's 2%.
John, how much averages 1% of our reserve? I heard you told us in Florida, I'm forgetting.
Well, 2.8 is about 4%, so it's
So 1% of 2.8?
2.8, right.
So what is 1? So we're required about 3% non-reserve.
Oh, yep.
And so we have 6% '22, '23. What is 1% dollar wise of our reserve?
750.
How much?
750. So good point. So we, we have to maintain a 3% reserve current state and, you know, based on these numbers, we can, we'll have the 3% still after this year. And that's assuming, you know, amount to get to maybe about the third, 23, 24 year, 3%, you know, doesn't
So here, FP17, it should be here.
Right.
Yeah. So going out to '23, '24, 3% would be 2.1 million dollars. So you can see that 1.7, 2.33, that's not acceptable. That 1.7 used to be up.
And then also
Assuming that our, if our budget goes up that, that's assuming the budget.
And that's, that's just this year, so in July.
Yeah.
You're going to move it over one more column.
And there'll be another
So basically, next year, we have a qualified budget.
Yeah.
And then the third projected year out, '25 or '24, '25, it's going to be a pretty big gap.
Yeah.
So one of the questions I got was spend down all the reserve, down to 3%, except which while that's great in theory, we're already spending it down from '23 to '24.
We are actually, we are actually accomplishing.
We're spending down that 4% ish.
Yeah.
Oh.
So it's not, so I guess what I was trying to get at is if you got rid of the 6.06%, maybe 3, you basically wouldn't have a budget deficit, you'd be close. But then your, year three, we can really get.
Yeah.
So no matter how you start it, you've got to go after that.
Yeah, we always have deficit spending. We can leave our reserve at 3%, but we're deficit spending. So we are borrowing from our savings account over here. Our savings account is going to be running.
And it's, you're going to be gone. Well, do I first judge that everything moves over in the new year, it's going to be worse.
And if you recall, as we spend on our reserves and don't have the reserves, we can hardly come on, then we're taking out loans. And we have to do that.
Well, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of almost, almost.
Don't go wrong, right?
Don't, don't get involved in it. And they're already going to ask us for a credit.
This will recover because I made
And with 90 days from the fall side, I think.
Officially, we haven't really hit the number yet. We haven't settled with all our groups and we haven't submitted 1,200 good shows that we're going to and actually this, this up to date extension actually helps us to settle. But it's kind of, and it's, you know, it's inevitable unless we can, unless we can do something. All right, we're working on it, so. So we did, for everyone's education, we So we did, uh, for everyone's education, we we cert self certified ourselves, uh, qualified. At second era, knowing that we, you know, have some expenditures that were material yet. But that that means that we may not be able to meet our current financial obligations in the current year. To, uh, or my subsequent years, so that's okay. And I can't, I know, I keep I keep repeating myself, but enrollment, you know, enrollment is important. If we can keep this continuing in the future, um, uh, the future is bright. And increasing, you know, completely different from most districts in the state of California, they're seeing finding. And, uh, had a cross because of this, so thankfully, we're we're gonna be level to increasing. And over the next seven years at least and, uh. Hopefully that comes to fruition and they actually show the schools that's our thing. Um, you know, there's a lot of positive names coming down from the state and all that, their education funding, you know, their own maximums. And so it's finalized, it can only go with what. Um, especially.
Paid by the May revised or Jews, they're gonna they're they're gonna have shots of their food or their.
Yeah, that's the point you two may realize when they actually.
Obviously, all the super tenants in the county are lobbying, do some C S V As lobbying, or all the newer executives are lobbying for part of that.
Okay. Uh, I have a question, but there were two more slides, I just wanted to go real quick, just, uh, just, uh, present, you know. So this is, uh. This is our history, history of our other operating and, uh. Other services and the operating expenditures. Uh. Budget line to do well. Uh, you can see that six point nine nine billion was 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 budgeted this year. Uh, they're not all consultants and it's a value piece, the majority, you know. You can see the big numbers are utilities, transportation. And insurance, uh, but it's, you know, five of the six or almost, you know, five of the seven million.
And if we tried to bring transportation in costs of the classes we wanted to.
I think so.
Just.
Well, I don't think it's the thing that you talked about, and then it would also, uh. Typical districts when they do like a sports thing, when they do transportation, costs a lot more. For the sports programs.
Me too.
Like it doesn't.
You know, maintaining a bus fleet is is not. You know, we gotta.
Have a facility for.
And the.
Find some people to drive.
But it's turned off, or just like it goes straight.
So your P and L, is is that like general money?
Property in my.
Plopping like right.
So you can see, you know, where the majority of this money is going, you know, uh. Our legal fees this year was a little more than we've seen in, uh, the last several years. Not only do we have negotiating issues, but we have some. Uh, staff issues, um, that we have to deal with from a legal standpoint. But, you know, I think I I find I find that that mine I don't significantly next year.
You can cut it down.
Mine out, right? Uh, the consultant fee, I think there is one, uh, you know, down the line forty nine thousand and forty thousand of that does to the P. That's our coming off the bed for our P B A S program. Um. Say what you will about that, that's what that goes for, um. Any questions? This is.
Attention to attendance, isn't that able to just need?
Yes.
Yes.
They give us one.
They give us that award and maybe there's a lot of different schools, I think, even though I thought it any done recently. So what are we paying for? Like what's that?
Currently, the folks that work with it aren't in the room.
Okay.
But they assist us with attendance and, you know, letter notification and and do you know more about it since you were present?
Yeah, it's the letters, um, transparency notifications and postage.
Okay, so they need to know all of that for us, it's kind of like gross.
Okay, and just a reminder that sometimes we, for example, you know, we need, we need nurses. We can't find nurses, we have to contract out. Oh, you need a school psychologist and we've posted, we can't find folks, we may have to contract out. So that and and we all know that contracted services are way more expensive than having our own staff. But sometimes we have a staffing shortage and we have to address it in a different way.
John, can I ask, in the other line. There's significant costs in seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen and nineteen or nineteen, twenty has dropped off. Are those related to bond costs such as specters and other costs like that?
No, that would be captured in the in the bond fund.
What are what's eight hundred and seventy nine thousand is other, I know it's for your here, but I mean, it jumps out.
Yeah, I agree. I I can do some more.
Yeah, but maybe if you're considering what got classified.
We made money this year.
Or maybe.
We made money this year, whatever we did this year, do that.
Well, you probably didn't tell them, you didn't use that thing.
You know, the other, the other big thing, obviously, utilities, one point three million, two point eight, you know, up seven thousand almost. Great, um, I mean, interesting to know how much amount of rate and how much of those supports are. So student. I mean, there's nothing you can do about that, other than blow those, so it turn off the heat, but obviously there's not. That's a, that's a big challenge.
P G N can run you a variation. Sorry, P G N can run a a variation, you know, you can ask them to go off three years and they'll send you the data.
Okay.
You can see what's gone up.
I mean, you know, when we were. Shut down for COVID, are you are P G N those were lower, uh, you were heating and lighting and cooling, you know.
Well, and that's what's.
I think that's for.
The big spike part, part of the. Well, you see a pot in twenty twenty one, a pot.
Because we weren't.
Yeah, three.
They've raised their rates, what, twice?
Yeah.
Since then, at least maybe three times?
Also the the insurance, like that that's a huge.
Yeah, if you're making up the losses for fires. In this county, especially.
Passing it along.
Uh, alright, so the slide that I didn't know about was, uh, special advantage and. I'm so sorry, it's a call, but, um. So at at the top there, you can see that the ten, the ten one million helps us, uh. Break even on the budget and what's highlighted again is the five thousand for special ed. Again, it's not consultants, but, uh, non-public schools, you know, the kids that we send. Um, that we serve in non-public schools is a huge expense. Scope programs, uh, again, we share that our kids. That, uh, are fancy, uh, scope programs. That 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 ex- expense line actually just started is going to increase by at least thirty percent next year. So I don't have a lot of money to send the one hundred is one of those programs. Um, N P A costs, which, uh, wouldn't be, um. You know, uh, services that, services for employees that we can't hire on our own. So some of those are, so. AIDS and, uh, junior specialists thing, um. But, uh, so all of those equal another six million dollars, um. Uh, to our budget, so those are another six million dollars for the same budget line we're talking about. Alright, I'm done.
I thought, well, some of those other, uh, districts within.
Yeah.
Even with the parents in charge, are they having to take so much from, uh, unrestricted, what they did as well?
Most.
Is it, is it a general thing to stay to vouch enough for years?
Correct, yeah. Um, you know. I think, uh, when fourteen percent of our our. Enrollment is, uh, our special, our. What's the word we can talk about? Identify. Identify the special, I mean. Uh, you know, that's, that's a pretty high number and and that's pretty consistent in in this county. So, um, I don't know, you know, I don't know all the districts, but it's not uncommon that, uh, special ed. Programs have kids where they're sending them to not, I have not experienced a district, some of the three or four districts that I've worked with. That don't have kids that are sent to non-public schools, these are academy programs, these are costly.
And if you recall, we've been, um, bringing back programs, so we have many more students applying to the scope programs. And Rachel Allen has worked to bring them back so that we can serve them and that's what we want, we want to serve our children. Um, but but there are instances where we have to provide other, other programs resources and they tend to be one piece.
So up to sixty million in unrestricted funds, ten is going right over to restricted. So that leaves fifty.
This sixteen point nine million is on the restricted budget, so, uh, sixteen point nine million is a special ed budget. Yeah, uh, that's on the restricted side. That's where ten million of it is coming from.
I just heard it.
Unrestricted budgets.
So our, so our, our, our unrestricted budget is fifty million on that one side. Ten of that is going over to special ed restricted, that leaves fifty, so the cost starts getting.
Yeah.
Smaller costs.
Alright, more questions should we get?
I have, I have a couple of questions. One of the things we know that, you know, we can look, raise, raise. And one of them is a partial tax, which in three years will be there. Just from law. Or for those, well, history wise, um, this district took. Uh, bond money and set up the tax high school and gave to the state. The fee, it's a five million?
They gave us that.
Or maybe?
They gave us that.
Um, no.
They gave us some money back.
They gave us some money back. Um, we gave them, they gave us some of the money back to to access to kind of relocate initially.
Yeah, so we paid that out of the bond?
Right, we had, we, okay, we gave them five million. Not to pay anything for when, till we were basically bought. And, you know, there, so, okay, so that's, that was one thing. Another thing is the cost money for those people who know, we bought property by. Orange jumps and to this day, we still own that property. And I remember. We paid six million for that thing. Type of thing, and I can remember when we bought that. The real estate people get ten percent of the land, six percent inside the house. I remember recommending to the real estate people, the very kind of six percent, obviously, for that. But I was thinking of the school, you know, I mean, how much money you need. And so if we were to sell that property. That money is now is still restricted, we can't go into the general fund, correct?
Really?
Or maybe?
Because we bought it with bond money?
Because you bought the bond money and I don't know, that's my question.
That's a really good question.
That's a really good question.
I didn't follow up.
Actually, I can answer. Proceeds from sales of surplus property are restricted with exceptions. Plus property, a school district can use. Action only for certain purposes. State law generally requires that school districts deposit proceeds in a restricted capital outlet or maintenance fund. Surplus property proceeds can. One time general operating expense. Or agree that the district has, one, no major deferred management. And two, which is not anticipated construction within.
Good to hear your comments.
Here's the kicker, in this case, the district forfeits its eligibility for new construction and modernization funding. Through the school facility program for at least five years.
So basically, you can go for that one.
So.
If we are selling.
What say we, I think we spent six million of that money, let's say we sold that land, we get fifteen. That's just your profit. We have fifteen. Actually, I thought it's great if you need to go to realtors. And then take the rent from the apartment to find, yeah, fund, get people money unfortunately for sale.
So so left, you know, you know.
Who can get the taxes off of the apartments?
One thing, one thing I found on radar is that, uh, the E T K program. So in. Has we've been talking about that a lot and the estimated cost is around like twenty one dollars to. To have the bills of classrooms to meet requirements and so like. If we had to come up with money for that project that we're required to have.
Then we wouldn't, wouldn't get any state money, it's.
We have a date, I thought they were gonna do fifty percent. They're gonna, uh, half up to a certain amount.
But if we were to sell the property, like we're suggesting, which has been a question that's come up several times.
Do you think why? But we have to cover for five years, we gotta cover all the.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to participate in the stability.
Can we sell it for more than the revenue in the next five years that we need?
I mean, you know, but there, that's a good question, I I have. There, there is, there is some, there is some.
But you could take whatever that bond money is, put it into capital out, like, could you? I hate to use the word save it, but could you use it as you needed it for facilities? Like, we couldn't do some things with the bond money because it's on.
The kicker again is that we would not be.
Well, I don't think we're planning this, well.
And capital outlay is another couple of five years.
But are we gonna go and look for another eighty million dollar bond in the next five years? It was always the plan of those three bonds, not.
The reason we bought that property was for financial, they have four school.
So you couldn't even sell like a package for teachers?
If there's some restrictions as a state.
Well, we're, we're continuing research, but I literally just sent me this, uh, and I think makes a pause, I don't know if it's, uh, in line with what I was going on. But, um, you know, we, we had a meeting of someone from the city. And they're gonna push together with some people about where the grant, we'll see what, what we can even get. I think it's it's ultimately your decision, how will, how will it go?
So the one thing we need to talk about really quick, sorry, let me. So we are gonna end this year at eight point five, six percent in our reserves. And next year is six point oh six, so good news, we're better off than we thought. But we still in twenty three, twenty four, we're gonna drop to the two point three three. So we are still going to have to make that next year. Because and we can't wait till twenty two, twenty or twenty three, twenty four, we have to make that next year. And those will be a. Culmination, I guess, of the budget advisory committee, which means monthly, quarterly, every other month?
Monthly, we have a few meetings that we haven't been able to meet, but yes, we typically meet monthly.
Okay, and the budget advisory committee is two trustees, and you two, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Jonah, yes.
You and Joe, and then.
We have, we have parent members and and administrators and, um. Uh, representatives from our labor partners.
Okay.
Basically, like twenty, twenty seven people, twenty four. Our first meeting, like, no one shut up.
Yep.
And then the second meeting, uh, our presenter unfortunately was ill, so we have to reschedule that one.
Yes, so I think, uh, just to piggyback on what you're saying, mostly like the work in figuring out, like. To break it down like super basic, if we're gonna, there's, when there's gonna be cuts that are made and how money is allocated, it's gonna be. Most of it's gonna be done in that committee. So like, the committee is more important than the board meeting, because we're just voting on something that's already figured out. So like, if I was, uh, a leader of a, uh. So like, if I was, uh, a leader of a, uh, a group of people who wanted to make sure the most money was allocated to my members. That's the meeting, probably any meeting I would go to, that's, that'd be like my number one priority. Because that's where people are gonna discuss, how do we turn the budget to make this budget work?
Well, there's so many things too, like we ask questions about, like the public doesn't always, you know, watch the meetings and stuff. When people have great ideas, let's cut this, let's cut that, there are always reasons, it seems, to be careful. Because, oh, you can't get this because then you violate, or you can't get, you know, so. And you may be programs that aren't being used, but there may be one school that's using that program and they have to handle it. So. It's really important that we get buy-in from teachers, parents, staff, board members, everybody that, um, has questions that are gonna be sit down and hopefully do work after. Have our budget meeting, which we have a budget meeting. Where can we look at it and what can we cut? And you're right. Even if the state, we've got to do, take action pretty quick here.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
And make some decisions.
What's our timeline for some of these?
Before, I mean, it all could change, right, when the government budget comes?
Right.
So we have to be prepared in the worst case scenario.
You know, we're, we're only two years from coming up with this stabilization plan already. I think based on the time, it's gonna be difficult to buy in two million dollars that we can reduce from our budget next year. This, you know, big question for everybody, just people. There's not much we can do about that at this point. So, anything we can come up with, and we, you know, we've been working on this for months now. And some things have stuck and some things happened, but, you know, but, you know, one of the big things that we've come up with is, our jet, really. Re, redid the, um.
The. Our settlement.
Yeah, yeah, I went through press scan. And other than that, I think we reduced, uh, three positions, not people, because there were potentially, there were not, I don't feel, okay. Three positions that we don't have to, or even budget for next year, so. I mean, that's as far as we got, and we can, you know, we can cut some of the things that we talked about earlier, like people pay.
Well, then you always talk of things that come up that you don't get to stay at settlement, for example.
Yeah.
You know, if you cost you a hundred thousand, you cost you half a million, you cost you more of these, how to go.
Yeah.
But I think to your point, it's cuts and where can we increase that money?
I just want, yeah, I just want, I want to realize even though these are better than what we saw even a month ago, we're not out of it yet. Cuts are still gonna happen and things are still, um, not all some kind of risks. In fact, we're getting closer.
We're, we're two months away from the.
Another, another year.
And we're, we're, we're basically left and a lot of other districts are helping to see some additional best coming.
And just a comment to Joe and Chris, um, yes, we need participation, yes, we need people to come talk, but the focus is my focus. What we do should be best for the overall population of students and, and, and the improvement for those students. If you get one special interest group that comes and yells. Is, is more voice trips and, and that, and then sways the order one way or the other. You have to take in mind, whatever decision you make has to benefit the overall district. And not, and, and so, where cuts are difficult and hard, I think you still have to be able to focus on what's the best. All fifty nine, almost all six thousand students, what's the best decision? And when you ever make a cut, it's tough, it's painful, it's hard, but you kind of have to really focus on what's best for, what's best. That's my.
We've often in education law, I've worked with, seeing, you know, I was a principal at the time where I was. Laying out forty five percent staff, and it was brutal. Uh, I did say we're incredible, uh, teaching staff, very good expertise and, you know, and then we had to give a lab. Should we transition it to some questions like, this is kind of a, um. We have a question that says, how does the, the board determine budget priorities? And how are stakeholders improving this process? And I'm thinking, how do we do this? We have an LCAP, we have a local control accountability plan, which is developed, uh, by the, the, the LCAP committee. Isn't there anyone in the audience that is participating in those meetings? I know someone told me so. We've got some folks that participate in those meetings. We go through the goals, really it's based on our data. So we look at our data and then we get input from parents, students. And people in the committee, we also have a survey that's going to be going out.
It went out today.
It went out today.
Today, yeah, I reviewed it yesterday, so it's right timing.
So that's how we determine what the needs are. We get stakeholder input and, and get information from other groups. But we're also looking at our data to see what, who, you know, what, who, who the students with the most need, and that's how we develop goals in that area. So we have a goal, boy, this is a task, we have a goal on student achievement, on, um. Uh, hiring the best staff, both types of staff. Uh, we have, I believe there's a parent engagement, I should know this, this is some Michael's, right? Anyway, uh, we have, and we have a goal on English and rehearse. So I think I'm missing one, uh, broad courses study, offering a broad course study. So within those very general goals, we have specific act, actions that we find with our, um, with our, with our budget. So that's a little bit about how the priorities are determined, but we, we find, we have a variety of ways of getting input. Please, if you want to join the LCAP committee, or please return the survey. And we also have a student survey that's going out, so I hope that the students in the audience will fill out their, their survey, because we want to hear from them. They have some powerful voices and some really good ideas, I've been hearing from the students, and that's a lot of fun, getting their perspectives on the school district and how we can serve services for them. And they are, you know, our personal partner.
I can't tell you that, sir. I think a lot of times, I mean, I, I'm self-employed, I'm a bookkeeper, I'm in finance, I'm in control of a couple of other companies. I get the question a lot, what, who makes your budget, what are the priorities? Well, there are certain things that are, are basically out of our control as far as the budget goes, right? You've got, you know, your, all your general administrative overhead, it is what it is, your water, your garbage, your staff, your negotiations, your salaries, your benefits. So what's left of the pie is the LCAP piece, I think that's what I was talking about. It's after our goals, um, our responsibility, our fiduciary responsibility is that there's a smaller piece of the pie left. And we'd like input from everybody to say what's important enough, little piece of that. But so, anyway, it's, it's, it's not as if the district just says, these are the things we're gonna do. There are these things that have to be there, paying your people, paying your bills. Um, it's the, what's left over is what is the priorities for kids. And that's just how it goes.
All those same priorities drive what we want to accomplish and pay all the people's accomplishments.
Exactly.
So we have a question, did all labor partners receive the same rates? If so, is there sufficient budget for that? Um, we have to cut back tariffs. Uh, currently, we have, um, two, we settled the two groups, they have received a similar increase. We are going to be settling within the next couple of, maybe this, maybe, maybe by Friday, we'll be settling with our third labor partner and they will receive, uh, same rates. And then at least our administrators for last, unfortunately, but they will, but, but, you know, they're not the least, so. And there will not be any, uh, cutback in Paris. That's, that's why we do have, the impact of the raises has impacted our budget. And that's why we're definitely spending and we, we have to look at, how can we save money? Because it, it, you know, did impact our budget. I'm gonna throw my view, if there's something I can answer.
Increase.
Given the, given the presence of a new, um, endemic illness in COVID that will continue to impact ADA, does the state plan on adjusting for illness funding? Once the home awareness ends, attendance rates will likely move lower than pre-pandemic levels. We have not heard that, but sometimes the state is a little delayed. I don't know if you remember, last year, they said you need to provide something for students that do not want to return in person. We received the reg, the legislation and the regulations in July. So the good news is we were planning in February, and then we had to monitor, adjust and change everything quickly because the rules changed. So that impacted staff. So oftentimes, the state doesn't, doesn't move as quickly as we'd like. So the possibility is, for example, the COVID days, we had ten days for folks that had COVID, and then, and then they stopped it. And we're like, well, what are we gonna do? We still have COVID people, we're still getting sick. And then they said, oh, by the way, yeah, we're gonna, um, back it to January. And so, we had already said, we're gonna do the ten days, we can't possibly do that to our personnel. So the state is feeling, uh, we'll, we'll see what happens with home awareness, but that, that is our worry and that's, that is kind of the anxiety that's producing within superintendences. If we continue this, if home awareness goes away, how's it gonna impact the funding and, and bond money, it is, you know, remember?
Sure, absolutely.
So what, so for our. Basically, um, this doesn't really. It's going for other districts that are doing. Um, that's one pretty far in legislature. Years for ADA and funding you on that, and, uh, you know, I think I'm hearing something telling me that maybe making its way, uh, through legislature. But those are, those are the ideas that are different than how it would be. But, you know, no matter what, we're, we're either funded, I mean, this is, this is precedent already, this is what's happening. You're, you're funding, the, the better, your current year ADA or current. And, um, this year's ADA was counted, so, uh, we're again, counting, uh, again, a very conservative number, ninety three percent are projected in the moment. And that would, that would reduce, uh, more revenue.
ADA plan, just so everybody understands, most districts in California seem to be very much inclined in all.
Yeah.
We happen to be one that probably will happen, but most districts are the other way, three, four hundred, a thousand, two thousand. And so when they are held, when the whole harness goes away next year, they're going to go.
We've, we've, we've historically had class since like two thousand to fourteen, fifty students a year.
A thousand.
And this is like the first year where we haven't lost a lot of these.
And, you know, and I have to say, when young parents are looking, schools are looking, where's the looking for the parents? What are we out for, sir? That's what's, that's what's, that's why the bridge is important. Next, and then, and truly, we're working, but this question, does the district health and welfare benefits include family coverage? I'm gonna, uh, toss it to my friend in HR. And will a, will health and welfare package be revised offset any budget shortfall?
Um, yes, our, um, health and welfare benefits are, you pay the same rate if you are, you know, a single person or if you have a spouse and ten children. Um, for a lot of our employees, um, our benefits package is a huge, huge draw. And, um, I'm one of the top benefits packages in the county. Uh, a lot of our, definitely some of our classified staff, our parent professionals, um, are mainly working for the benefits package because they're covering their whole family with our benefits package. So, um, one thing, it's definitely a priority that we would like to do is, um, have some meetings next year to really look at our benefits package, um, with a, a large enough group that includes, you know, people from every union, management, um. You know, just, kind of everybody represented to talk about, do we want to explore more of a tiered plan? Um, where if you're single, you pay a rate, if you have a spouse and children, you pay a rate, and if you have a family, you pay a rate. That could have some savings for us. Um, so that's, that's definitely something that, that we, we do want to look at because our benefits cost is so high. Um, when, when I'm recruiting, when we're out there, um, you know, when I'm in a job fair, I have our teachers, I'm pumping up our benefits. Um, because that's something that, that even if our salary was a little bit lower, if you know that you're gonna be able to cover your whole family. I pay two hundred dollars a month for my family. So that's, that's really, you know, that's, it's kind of offsets. Um, so it's, it's definitely something that's part of the whole package. John, did you want to add anything else?
Can you want to, you want to just say that for us to change that, we have to negotiate with all the various groups.
Absolutely. Yeah.
If nothing that manager can say, we can save five million, this is the new plan. That has to be accepted by everybody and I'm telling you, if I'm gonna use it and you're gonna cost me more, guess what? I'm not gonna choose that.
Yeah.
We started doing that in twenty eighteen, twenty nine budget committee.
I know, I know, it's been brought up as to discuss, but, you know, so that's, that's a difficult thing. We all realize what it is, and how you say that you do a job fair, it's a big, it is a big pool, you know, for that, so.
What's our average cost, John, if we're like twenty, twenty two thousand?
Yeah, twenty two thousand, not the average, it's, it's maximum. If you had five percent of that, that's now twenty three thousand one hundred.
So even if that employee was paying three thousand dollars a year, it's still picking up the other nineteen thousand.
Well, that's, that's our cost actually, the twenty, twenty two thousand this year, twenty three thousand one hundred. Next year is the cost of the district's own curves, so, the actual plan.
So, um, this question about budget advisory committee, are dates communicated if you're on the committee? Or whether from the, send an email, but if you're, if there's some interest in joining the committee, please reach out to us and ask us. So question is related to the district is well below the undupated people count. What is well below? The percentage is fifty five percent and we're at forty five, for forty five percent. So that's the gap where it's.
This requires us for concentration.
For concentration dollars, yeah.
If we hit the fifty percent mark, then.
Thanks.
Then we get one hundred percent of the supplemental grant. And we'll gain forty, sixty percent of them.
So in terms of what we're planning to do, we did do a big push and an outreach, but we didn't, you know, we reflected on the process. It was a little bit too late for, for Richard Crank, they started July. So we're looking at doing it differently. Um, we, we haven't, you know, we, we, we're gonna do the outreach, we've also discussed, but we haven't finalized, do we do a registration round? Do we do different strategies to get that form out? What, what happened this year, for example, though, is, uh, we, we were pushing out the numbers to the principals. And so whenever is, there was a personal outreach from the principal and then he emailed for him. Hey, please fill out this form, so that helped increase the numbers a little bit. But that's something that we need to continue to discuss and be a little bit more aggressive. I, I do want to remind people that when we look at supplemental concentration grant funds, that's not for everyone. That is for our targeted students, right? Homeless, foster youth, English learner. Is that.
Freedom.
Freedom, used to low income, so we, that, that's targeted direct support for those kids. So, but we definitely need to revisit that, and it's interesting that, that it just happened, you know, I'm convinced, we, we have the folks. We have to, you know, entice them and encourage them to fill out the form, we can't mandate it, um, because that is not appropriate. You know, that's kind of against the law, so we have to be careful about that.
Could we do if you get them, those people to try to date, your school gets a party?
Yes.
Like house or, yeah, you get involved, something like that, some sort of.
And I. And I.
Some pay.
We have some, and we have some competitive stuff there. If you, if you have met, the principal is not competitive. We're for operating. At least, yeah, that's, that was the aim. At least, yeah, that's, that was the aim speaking for some of that. Anyway, it's possible. Okay. So, um, we have a question about DO staffing. How many, um, new DO positions have been created? And how many are COVID or web time funds? And will these positions be eliminated when those are no longer available? So currently, we have two curriculum coordinators, we have assistant director position, and we hired four staff secretaries. That's where we're at right now. Yes, those positions are all funded with COVID funds and they will go away when the money goes away. In fact, one of them is going away tonight, unfortunately. So, uh, that, that's my count right now, but what happens is, this is temporary. We're doing a lot of work and then those folks will, will be laid off, unfortunately.
Can you repeat those, please? Two curriculum
Two curriculum coordinators, one assistant director, and four staff secretaries.
Thank you.
And we, and also want to remind folks that we also, we also added teachers with money to treading. You know, one of, one of the things that, that people may not realize is there's two members in cabinet that are a little excessive about primary. Uh, Dr. Houston, I'm a kindergarten, I taught, I taught first grade. When I see numbers of twenty-eight or twenty-nine first graders, sorry, secondary, or kindergartners, I'm like, oh, boy, we have a problem. Uh, those little guys need more intensive support to learn to read. This is the bait, we're filling the foundation and trying to close that gap, I mean, leave our fundamentals. Anyway, so we, we often argue about that, what if we lower those class sizes? They're not, they're, it's not acceptable. So, we, so the COVID money has been used to add teachers also. As we added teachers, we're getting more kids. It was really kind of fascinating to like, we're gonna have a teacher, there's more kids, okay, we need to have another teacher. And then as, you know, I, we all know that, but staffing has been very tough, uh, this year. So I'm really excited that we have done, we've done hiring, we're almost hired, um, because we went out early this year, thank you. Can you just say, yeah? Yeah, because we're getting top candidates for that.
Can I say something about the staff secretaries too? So, so they're, um, they're listed under HR. However, I have one that's at the DO, um, and he is supporting with, currently with, um, anybody that's not vaccinated that has to submit to becoming healthy. He's doing a lot of that. So we have around a hundred staff members that have to test weekly. Um, he's also going out, you know, tomorrow he's gonna be late, he's gonna get a lot of us to testing. So bobbing around to the sites to support with that. Um, and, and really, the, the staff secretaries were a response to needs from the sites. Because when we came back, their COVID was out of control. We had a contact trace and that was like all the people were spending their time doing. So one staff secretary is just at Rancho. Um, she's up there in the office doing, um, COVID-related contact tracing. Um, and another one is, um, filling in for, um, a office assistant that is on, um, on a leave. So she's covering the virtual learning academy, um, in the office. Um, and then the other person, that's it, there's just three of them. One's on a leave, one's covering, um, the VLA, um, and, and was also working at other sites during the day. So she did a different site every day just before the COVID. One's at Rancho and then one's at the, at the DO, doing, like I said, the monitoring of the, the unvaccinated staff members. So even though they're like listed under DO positions, they're out sites.
Exactly. So this is, this is a really interesting question and I think that, that, you know, there, I don't know if there's a real right answer. Um, in comparison to other districts, I've heard that our district is admin-heavy at the DO and at Costco school sites. What is, what is the list of positions? I don't have that right at my fingertips, of all district and admin position. I want to say that I got here and I was shocked, shocked at the fact that there was no one at the DO. I'm like, I, I was, uh, basically last year trying to run that service, trying to run HR and trying to be the superintendent. And I was not affected, I'm gonna be really honest, you know, um, but we, you know, we, we have a assistant superintendent at services, she left in October. Um, that, you know, now we have Dr. Vedas. Um, but they were, I, I am used to more staff. So I don't think, my, my opinion is that the time of our park is not admin-heavy at the DO. You have not had a curriculum adoption in twenty years. That's because there's no one to do it. Um, there's not been a lot of, uh, you know, these, these are my opinions and you can argue with me at the end of the day. I, I don't, there's not, there's been not a lot of emphasis on English learner programs. The E, the EL master plan is outdated. That's because there's no one leading that charge and looking at those documents to make sure that we're
Well, that's your staff, it's fifty percent roughly of our students.
We, we have a significant population. Um, anyway, and, um, so we, we've added staff, we've added community meetings that are bilingual. It's needed for our community. Um, we've added, you know, we, you know, we've added curriculum coordinators, that's why we text the adoption. We have to talk about math courses. They, they are not working, they should be. So we have Mary LaFloss as curriculum coordinator, trying to do the vertical articulation. But what she's been doing is subbing for teachers, subbing for principals, subbing for assistant principals. And doing her, the math on the side, John, we're all, she's also been extremely helpful. And to all of our English learners. So in my opinion, we don't. I'm gonna tell you what my, I mean, this is my dream, this is the ideal. I had ten staff members in ed services in my previous district. I had a data analyst, two branch members. I had a director of elementary and a director of secondary. It was a different process, but it was a little bit better, right? So we can't have the same. Um, but we, we have gotten some positions, we're really fortunate, this is where the one-time money has helped us, to have some positions to get the work done. Because if you have, because what happened prior to adding these administrators is the assistant superintendent sat in her office and ran, wrote plans. She lived out, she wrote, she wrote, she wrote. And then you don't get the opportu, and, and Dr. Vedas is getting a lot of writing, but she also has staff working on curriculum. So that, that's a hard question. If you look at, you know, different districts, there's a district in Marin that has superintendent, a principal, a director, and three hundred children. And so it just, it varies in the priorities of the district. So that's kind of my opinion on that. Um, and, and, and just as a reminder, those positions we've added will go away. So.
Additionally, our school psychologists are on the management, um, salary schedule. And that wasn't always the case when I, you know, just five years ago, our sites were members of RITZIA. And, um, it's a very hard position to fill. Um, and in order to be competitive, um, we did negotiate with the union to have them be a part of management. And we have, I want to say eight school sites, um, in the district. So that, when, when, when you hear like admin-heavy, it's, it's because that's being factored in. Because they're calculated, when John shows the calculations of certified management salaries, the sites are in there. Um, because they're funded, you know, in that section. So.
Paid for six thousand students, okay.
Yeah.
Not very many.
I think one of the things, though, that we also need to be aware of, as a board and the district offices, if we are constantly saying, hey, well, we're kind of one of the least funded districts, it would make sense that we're one of the districts that doesn't have a lot of employees as well, right? The two
Right.
Have to be side by side.
Absolutely.
So, uh, while I understand that we don't have as many employees as maybe some other districts, we don't have as much money as other districts even, so I think we have to, in all aspects, be a little kind of scrappy with, with what we do. And, um, and it's just a, a function of how much money we get, trust me. You know, and those, that money has to cover classrooms and facilities and support staff and all of these. And, and I, and I certainly, and I, and I'm just thankful that we have one-time money to get some work done. Yeah, no, I agree.
Well, that's the thing, it's a fine line between, you've got to have people to do the work.
Yeah.
If, if you don't have people to do the work, then you can't create the program, you can't create the curriculum. You can't go in and study, students are leaving. You're kind of like on this vicious, so, didn't, John, didn't you create a spreadsheet that shows, not the names of employees, but the positions at the district office and how they're funded?
Yeah.
Is that something that we could get somehow out to the public so they can see that, no, there are not fifty people working in the district office? Thank you.
I know that someone could look it up on Transparent California if they really wanted to. I'm okay sending that out. I think that we should remove the column of how much, because you can look at, if you email it, that's what you sent us.
I think it's public, it's public information, but I actually called, um, Transparent California two weeks ago. They're short-staffed, because their numbers, I think the last time they posted was nineteen.
Yeah.
So they're, they're really gone. They, they have listed people that don't work in. But the last time I called them in twenty eighteen, it was about thirty days and they had the numbers set for me. They're, they're suspended, but they're, it's all volunteer, they get no, no money for, yeah.
So amazing staff was added using COVID fun, COVID SOS funds, classroom aids. Is there a plan to hire any of those folks currently? Well, we, what we do is we have open positions and those folks, those amazing folks are telling them, please apply, please apply for open positions. And, and I've been working with the principals, saying, you know, if you've got these folks, please encourage them to apply. So we do have positions, others, we are professional positions, and we want, want, we always want to keep amazing folks. And that's what we were able to do with some, some, you know, we had a position open in the department of DO. They, they applied and that's kind of the goal, we don't want to ever lose amazing people.
And additionally, we have, um, some new positions for next year. Um, so our site set up TK, um, because of the new law with TK is, the ratio is currently twelve to one. So what we're doing is we're staffing at twenty-four to two. So a credential teacher for TK and then a, a general ed instructional assistant. So those are, um, six additional positions. Um, we're interviewing for those now, um, sites are interviewing, um, their SOS folks for that. And for those of you that don't know what the SOS are, so, so when we came back last year and came back, we were coming back in a hybrid model, in elementary, we were on an AM/PM schedule, we had to do temperature checks, we had to do crisis code check-in, everybody was wearing masks. Like looking back, I was like, that was, I mean, that was really hard to do. Uh, and so we needed additional staff to take everybody's temperature and check everyone in, the kids all had in-ears. There was a lot more work than people that we had. So then summer happened, we came back and we were back with a lot of anxiety, with being back with a whole set of whole classroom. And we were also doing crisis code, um, every morning as well. And there were just additional, still additional needs, um, like the site set. So the SOS standard for specialized optimal support and it, it's a non, um, they're, they're, um, they're not in the union, they're like our new duties, they're, they're at-mill employees. And it provided a lot of flexibility for, um, a lot of parents that maybe they wanted to work two or three hours a day or they wanted to work Monday and Wednesdays, you know, they can be really flexible with their time. Um, and provide a lot of support for the sites. And when they weren't doing things related to COVID, we did have them supporting in classrooms. Um, so we, we, we want our positions, that are lead positions, to be in our union, to be SCA unit members. Um, it's very important to the union and to us that, that our members are represented. And, um, so, so moving forward, at the end of this year, we will not be having those SOS positions. Um, we're gonna close out the year. But, so staff can apply prepared professionals, we have openings. I encourage people to look on, um, our district website, prepared professionals, you have those general instructional assistant positions, our expedition, the TK classrooms. And then if people want that flexibility, they only want to work here and there or certain hours of the day, we're always to be, always we give renewed duty, um, support, um, especially at our elementary schools. So, um, I think that if we can find something for anybody that wants to work here, I, I have so many vacancies and if someone wants a job, you know, if they meet the qualifications for the position, we would love to hire them. So.
So it is seven thirty-five, our goal was to end at seven, should we continue a little bit longer? There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven questions.
Is everyone prepared for that, if you can? We have to leave. Is everyone, is everyone on the board, if they have a couple more?
Sure. Enrollment, increase of two hundred and seventy-nine net. How many are attributed to Virgil? How many, how does the cost per kid of the VLA compare to in-person students? First thing in, our virtual academy has approximately a hundred and fifty students enrolled and it's been unfounded. We also have maybe three or four, maybe five students from outside of district. Uh, other, the districts weren't able to open virtual academy, the smalls, so we accepted those students. And John, how much is the cost for VLA compared to in-person students? We still receive, you see the same funding? Yeah, I wanted to just make sure.
Uh, well, it's categorized differently. It's, it's out of the, you know, they're an independent study program. Is this on?
No, we can
No, we can do it. For tax, John, for tax.
It's an independent study program, so, um, it just shows up differently and potentially, uh, to get a full ADA for that. They have to show the work that is being done. You know, the artists get paid for the ADA, it's the same. And, and we're paying for those teachers with one-time money, so.
How many students do we have coming from out of district, you know? Because that's good, right?
Yes.
Maybe five. No, like in the whole district and all from outside of the district.
Maybe one of the students
It's, it's like changes every month, right? Twenty in, twenty out, every month.
Yeah, but those are students coming and going, I think you're asking for inter-district transfer students.
Yeah, like how many, how many kids are coming from outside of the district or from USC?
We will have to
Because I would say tech guy is probably a big draw for that.
What's that?
We chose different boards, something that, you know,
Right, you know, we pull up and trade and we also pull, pull for himself, um, we get a license.
So, and, and the interesting about the virtual learning academy, academy is we just never know how it's coming. The state is going to be revising that, so it will probably look different and we're not certain. So we're wait, we're waiting to hear, hopefully it will not happen in July, please. Um, but that's, we'll have to adjust, adjust the virtual learning academy, academy based on what we hear. But we have that money for next year already, like, can we do it? All right, I'll say that growing is based on grade level ADA and base. Base goes up as kids get older. Why do we get, um,
Base pay.
Base pay. Um,
Four through six.
Four through six, seven through eight, if our schools are four, five, and six, eight. What's it, state pay?
Yeah, I see. Because some schools are six, seven, and eight in middle school.
Yeah, we didn't come up with the
Yeah, the fourth performance provided by the state. And in a lot of districts, it is pay for six, and seven, eight is middle school and then
Right.
That's what I meant.
We would love for it to be change as well, so please try to see what you're trying to do. Yes, we're ready for those down pay rates. Partial tax renewal. Are there plans to renew? If not, how will the funds be made up? Wondering, it's
I think that's going to go to the faculty committee.
Yeah.
There's like a whole, uh, there's money associated with a study, right? Seeing if we're gonna do it and there's money to put it out there for the vote. It has to be something that's one investment.
One of the things that you do, because I think on a separate, you know, is you go out and you pull, you know, and you see if they were willing to pay, continue to pay, you know, to see the feasibility. Partial tax needs a higher percentage of asset versus bond, need two-thirds. So you, you do that, and I would say, yes, I mean, that's two years from now, that the board of the school district, it would be foolish not to, most likely, forward with that to, to continue funding. Because nobody wants to take the money and put it kind of, hey. And so it's just a matter of at that time, before that time, to prepare for that, to go forward. And to do the survey to see is, is, you know, what, for those surveys are pretty sophisticated. They can determine what, you know, the, the certain percentage of what people are willing to pay to get the house. So if you could do a survey and say, if you want to, that's fantastic. But, but they, they kind of, they, they hit the spectrum. But they, they kind of, they, they hit, they hit the spectrum, so you can see them. So yes, you foolish out to say in two years from now, you know, which is not going to be anyone who's too mature.
So does it run out on January first of twenty twenty-five or December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five?
I think it's, I think it's June.
And then what's the?
It runs out with, with when the election was, either it was the district election or, or the member election. I think we did a special election because when they pull, they do the survey, you determine what your very chances are of passing, so.
And then so we did, like, let's just say part thousand Jews in twenty twenty-five. We need to start working on it in twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
And seniors can opt out of the parcel tax. They can't opt out of the bond.
Out, you can opt out of the parcel to your citizen. Um, you cannot opt out of the bond.
So soon.
So do we have to decide sometime in twenty twenty-three that yes, we want to start looking into this and then?
I think so, yeah. Because you have to hire the firm.
Right.
And aren't a lot of them going to do it? But they do all the survey and the manuals.
It's an investment, true. It's, it's, it's expensive to do that. And then to put something on the ballot, things up there, we did have, it's probably, it's coming around for three of us or three seats of them. So therefore, there'll be some election. And then there's election office.
And then do we, would it be voted on in twenty twenty-five or do you vote on it in twenty twenty-four so that?
Well, it depends on, you know, depends on how close. You could go out, you could, you could vote on it several times before it passes, if that's the case. Or it just depends on what the.
What you want to be prepared is, you know, it's your strategy to go out again.
Yeah.
Do you wait?
Some of them, you know, before, so you know they.
Like, here's my turn before, if I don't, do I turn it in early so I get a chance to redo it? Or do I wait till the last minute, you know?
I think that's where you go to the experts that we kind of afford to do it. And they'll go figure out what to come on this.
All of it, say the economy, is other things, what's happening, so.
Right. Capital outlay, funding, um, sorry, capital outlay, anything over five thousand, same Julie, who sets the five thousand? I'm looking at.
That's also, that's also an account, C Sam or just the California standard account. Allocate and best.
It's, it's kind of.
So doesn't that capital improvement, so we can do depreciation on?
They are.
What, what we're seeing in capital outlay in the general, in the general funds or like the, the mowers that we bought earlier in the year and big equipment like that.
Right, something like one of the five or three.
So the five thousand dollars.
It's the dollar amount as well.
It's just, it's something you identified on your books. Republic organization, someone can buy a vehicle, so you don't get the write-off. We don't pay taxes. So there's no such thing as appreciation. You know, my business, something like that, but I have something, you know, you can write off, you know, you can appreciate that. It's just still accounted for. Yeah, we still count them because we have to determine, you know, what all these buildings are that we own and that goes into our classification of our, of our credit. Looking at your part of you.
I think one amount monetarily and percent, other ones of the continuing resident bond lines and property taxes are allocated to the district music program.
That's, I mean, I think that's referring to that we pay for a couple of our music teachers out of parcel tax. And that's a, that's a lovely decision. The parcel tax, uh, the way it's written is very broad. We, you know, we use it to, use it for marketing or something. Transferred, it says one of them is music and that's just where.
That goes back to the survey, you know, the, the marketing people that say, here's a marketing tool for you. Is you going to get people vote for your thing? Doesn't necessarily.
Doesn't say you have it.
Every dollar or.
They're asking like, what, what's the?
Yeah.
Not like, is there a percentage, it's like, what is the?
Yeah, what's the?
How much of that bond money is for the program?
Yes.
Parcel tax.
Well, what they, doesn't it affect the bond?
Well, the one point three's on the dollar parcel tax money goes into the general fund.
Right, it goes into our budgetary general fund.
It's not as if it's.
Is it a hundred percent?
No, because a bunch of it's paying, you had it on the slide a while ago and it has, few smoke of it is paying for seven teachers or a certain number of teachers. And so it can be spent on these things. It doesn't have to be broken up. The ten percent spent on this and eighty percent spent on this and.
No, they're just asking how much.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it's going in the general fund.
Yeah.
So it's not like they're taking ten percent of one point three million dollars and only spending it on music teachers. As Lex says, it's a marketing thing when they're.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, again, I say about the question is like, how?
I can't tell you how many times I was sharing with eighteen or eighty-nine bodies issued marketing fee. So we're going to do this, this and this. And as costs went up, we didn't do this, this and this. And I'm just saying, as I got beat up for not building a new high school, or that, that didn't happen with the eighty-nine dollar basis. I just shoot it in eighty-nine. So again, it's marketing tools, you know, the overall plan as you come up with that type of thing, the plan has changed. So you can't say, you know.
Well, they're going to send out the flyers that say, keep your music programs.
That's the word.
You know, when they do the bond, there's no worries in any school, it's safer. They're going to do the things that people want to hear, pass it.
Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars went, of the, went towards the music teachers that we get out of.
Is that for you?
It's my question.
Yeah.
And I think right on, I, I'm tired of my parcel tax.
That's okay.
That's okay.
So yeah, it's one of the amount. And because I think many of us are property owners and we voted a few years ago, that's specific. Parcel tax to pay for local music program and to reduce taxes. So I want to know the value amount and if you need a camp, I know, maybe not tonight, how it was allocated, where did it go?
So this year we spent two hundred thousand dollars of that for music program?
Yeah.
Two twenty or two twenty-seven this year was spent on music program.
But that's not to say there's some law or requirement that it has to be spent on that particular thing because it goes in the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's another side of it. Let's say the parcel tax is buyers and we don't have to leave a million street tubs. First thing they're not, I turn on the speed or first thing we wouldn't actually do is pay no more music. Then you kind of look at the overall district and say, you know, where can we come up with that one point three? And not just start pointing fingers.
On top of the two point three, you're already on the boundary, two point six, yeah.
It's a big difference, a lot of things.
Okay. PG has, PG has increased from sixty K to a hundred and twenty K. How much of that is, is from the tag? I don't know. We know that off the top of our head.
It's a part of.
You would have to look at the PG and you know.
You have to do, you have to do an audit. You'd have to.
And we got an audit here.
I was like, I'm actually a couple of years ago, I have to look it up.
Yeah.
What we did was we took the square footage of the district and just looked at what our PG E bill was. And then we took the square footage of the tag and kind of figured out what it would be. But we have an energy specialist and we could run some numbers. I don't think we can just, we can't really figure out exactly how the tag was, we just not get it set.
So we don't get like a bill, one of us and a bill for, okay, so you took the.
Every, every property will have.
Well, you can look at the high school.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
So we can close to figure out because the rates are not.
Oh, the rate, cool. It's not that the TAN rates.
You could get less.
You could get less.
Yeah, we could get less.
And if the meter is like, something like that, it's like easy to meter how much actual energy is being used. Like meters are super cheap, so you know, you know.
One of, we've gotten this question a lot, like how much is the energy in the tag building? Which is a wonderful question and it would be great to know, but we're not turning the lights off at the tag. Like it's here, it houses students, it has classrooms, it's.
You know what's crazy? Like, this is, yeah, this is real life, like PG went up, my bill is six hundred and seventy-two dollars. And that was because of like right after winter break or whatever. That's when like the prices started jumping. And like, uh, we, like my family stayed at home and, uh, so they were there for Christmas or whatever, winter break. And then there was COVID thing, so that was another two weeks everyone's at home, right? And, uh, my wife was like, you're, 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 the thermostat's a little too low. Because when I leave the house, it, my phone up, like it just shuts down the house. So, so then I was like, oh, this is crazy. So I started watching it and you'd be surprised like how much money I cut just because like it's on your radar. And it would probably be a good, a good investment for us to monitor certain buildings. Because yeah, you can say, you know, this meter is metering this whole district, but you don't, you can't identify what buildings are using a lot of the, a lot of the power. And I, that's what I started to do. I started itemizing every single thing that we're doing. I'm like turning down the water heater till it's like an acceptable, you know, whatever. And like, I'm like, I'm not cooking in the oven, I'm cooking on the electric, you know, instead of gas, gas is higher, so. You have like an electric little skillet. I'm cooking on the electric skillet now, like it said to bake. I'm, well, I'm going to figure out how to bake in the electric skillet. And like, and, and it's like, all like you have upstairs, downstairs thermostat, like no heat downstairs. Dogs like it colder better anyway, so. Like all that stuff. And then last month it was a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and it's still been cold, you know? And obviously my family wasn't there the whole time, but I was.
I wouldn't be there either, John.
That's, you know, you, you know, hanging sweatshirts, way cheaper than PG. So what my point is, is that like you could go to like the tag building and that's a huge building. That is like a, that's a, like a school. Like, I mean, I'm sure that takes as much energy as some of the elementary schools. And that should be, we should be monitoring that power usage individually.
All, all the appliances, say they are in that type of thing, you know.
It's a, but it's space though.
Right.
Your, your, your kid, like one of the biggest costs is conditioning the temperature of the space. Lighting is, I mean, lighting is, yeah, it's all LED, but it's still a lot. Like conditioning a big space way up here, you know, like that's a lot of volume to condition. You know, if this building was half the size, it would take less than half the energy to condition the space.
I would just like to say, based on the temperature of our board meetings, please don't decrease the heat.
It's cold. All right, issue you like this. How much, again, to, related to the PG and E, I have a few more questions. How much is from HVAC systems? I think we have to do a little more research. Uh, going, uh, from an HVAC system is going full time, can HVAC, HVAC be paid write-off? And then HVAC costs are finally PG and PG will lower some?
Chuck, I think maybe probably the question is asking about, because this came up, is how, uh, right now, we're, uh, you know, we have filters and the fans are running all the time. So to filter the air to help with trans, you know, lower the transmission of COVID. So like we're running the fans all the time when usually only one, there's a C P there. So can we offset those costs probably with COVID money of running the fans and the filters?
All right, here's a question. So if we're spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month, how much is that electricity? And what's the break in Josh if we have solar fields? Do you pay a lot to need to buy solar fields to reduce?
Property if you want, so.
No, I mean, there's a lot, you look at parking lots, like. There, so I know that in previous ministries that we would break even, but so, you know, I, you know, if we could, if sixty thousand of that is electric, could we reduce that nothing? But then you have to do this for a long-term cost.
Yeah.
I know we missed out on all the state incentives, that's for sure.
Because costs are put in the solar, in the parking lot, is it?
You don't get the incentive.
We're, we're funded, it's one point one million PG.
Well, that's a good place to look at Lucy Katz, I'm thinking.
But, but, you know, rates are just going to, yeah, where, where gas is, they're just, by trimming it out, then the rates are going to go up.
These, these things are.
I would love to do that. If we can offset a million dollars.
That's job.
If, if we could be a negative, you know, if we could actually be.
I thought I was gonna say that because you're not.
It's power. Exactly. So like the thing about that is like the biggest.
You get.
You can sell power back.
It's, it's, you don't, it's not like you're making.
No, but we can share.
Yeah, it has to be a certain amount, like.
No, it doesn't. He works, that's his department.
Well, we can have that.
We brought, we brought like seven, I probably got like seven, eight, nine, ten, just trying to get solar to this district.
And the, the thing is like, you know, ten years ago, when you have, the gas prices are way cheaper than electric prices. So I was like, you know, I got my electric dryer, got a gas one and I was saving a bunch of money every month because of that. Well, now it's, electric prices are there. So now really to capitalize on all this electrical is you need to get rid of all your, you need to start getting rid of your gas appliances. So all your heaters, which are mainly gas heaters, you have to get heat pumps that are all electric and you have to switch it over. You know, it's, it's, it's not straightforward. It's like we all have, everything's electric and if you get solar, that goes away. The huge cost is gas and that's way more than electrical. Oh, cost electricity and solar doesn't affect our gas.
Well, we could ask Josh to get something together for us to take away with gas.
Okay, that concludes all of our questions. Well, thank you, John, and you.
Oh, thank you.
I submitted one more.
This is a suggestion, so we, so.
But it was a question.
A question?
But it was a question, not a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah. About offering a meeting, uh, meeting the budget advisory committee during the school day.
Having release time, so we could get really people there with fresh minds and not in half the school thing, so you could really, guys have a.
The only thing is like I have a job.
Yeah.
So like, it's like, you know, everyone has to take away time. So like for me to like scar away at one day to do that, it's very hard. You know, like I, my, my day starts around thirty and then it ends at five. And then after that, Tuesdays, you know, Wednesdays, Thursdays, I'm picking my kid to soccer. You know, I pick up my daughter and I'm just picking up my daughter from school. So for me to like, you know, it's very hard to get everyone to, this isn't like, I don't work for the school this year. Chris, I don't work for the school this year.
I feel like it's.
No one works for the school this year. So to have it, it's pretty hard.
It's a cost too because we have a tree of school things, all of those people that are employees, who are drinking a pound of stuff.
And one thing being negotiated in the, in the contract that I was working on today, getting all the new things on there, um, is that there is that twenty hours that can be used for district committees. So, um, you know, it, it's part of that, just kind of additional. If that's something you're interested in and you want to be on the budget committee, um, you know, those hours can be calculated for, you know, part, you know, we're going to meet once a month for an hour, that's ten hours. Like that could be part of your, your agile time, um, for the, for the committees.
Where are people's time, which is asked.
Right, and a half day if you consider.
All, all of, all of the things are active.
I, we have jobs too, we have families and kids too, like it's, it's, we hear you, it's, it's, but I'm just, because if people aren't attending these meetings and we do want to have robust conversations, it's just a suggestion. To kind of just put a little thought in your brain. And I just have caused, and subs are, that it would be factoring in.
So you think, have you, during the work, during the work day, you get more people to attend?
No, when we did it in eighteen, nineteen, we had twenty to twenty-five people at every meeting. That was union representation, staff members, principals, teachers, community members, parents.
Is that, what, what time of the day?
And we also, and we also want.
Try to do four to five thirty.
And we also want to be able to include the parents. I, I want to remind us all that many of our parents are working till six thirty P M. And for them to take a day off from work, they will lose their job. So that's, also want to make sure that our, that our committees reflect the entire community. And we have more of a parent voice. I think that's really important.
I think that was like what, if you're, if you're, if you're, if you're, if best people attending, but they can't make, you know. I think that was like why we started doing meetings later, because best people are sending, but they can't make, you know?
Yep.
I know it's like a kid, my kid, like when soccer stadium was at four o'clock, I'm like, how the heck do people get their kid to soccer at four o'clock, you know?
My kid did it for the drivers.
Huh?
For the driver.
Well, you know, it's, well, that's, that's, that's what it is, so it's like, if, you know, we had meetings, we tried to see them later so more parents and people could attend, you know, and not like liberally from work, you know?
I mean, there's six.
Part of this too, is when you run for school, you give out a party.
Yes.
Um, and we have to make this happen, so I can remember, we, we have board members of different makeup that had a lot of meetings in the day. And so historically, I would take two weeks of my vacation time, where you have to, you have to pack it to attend meetings or something like that. And then historically, I always took four or five days off, vacation times for, to go to the graduations, and it worked, literally, but it was my choice. Worked three full days on Project Grab, setting up that party, you know, that was just, you know, choice, Project Grab was important. But there were never more meetings during the holidays in order to visit school and stuff like that, and just, I mean, and the board member, I just, I took it. She did that as part of my responsibility, a big one, so.
So there's a lot of people that think, oh, it's only eleven meetings a year, and I just love it, cause you're fighting on the board. There's never been twenty-five, thirty maybe, between the board study, the special meetings, the regular meetings, it's a lot of work, you know?
And then if you're, you're going in, in, you need your master of governance, education, education, and then, that, that we, that we've done and, you know, we're just doing it, so. Just as a continual learning process.
All right.
Anything ready?
Yeah, thank you everyone for coming tonight.